Commissioner Cox.
President.
Commissioner Burd. I will move to new business. You all like the Chair and Vice Chair. We have a full five member commission. We can do that. I'm going to give Chair and Vice Chair. Gonzalez take over this part here. I like the Vice Chair and Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to for Chair for Brianna.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Oh, her vote. Okay, then that passed five. Oh, so we'll go ahead and elect a Vice Chair.
I make a motion for Vice Chair for Brandon.
Is this? Sorry, I'm still struggling with this here. Do I just click on second?
Or I don't think you made the motion yet.
Make the motion?
Yes.
Now do it.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay. Vice Chair Brandon Bridge.
Okay, then we will cast our vote. Okay. So we will go ahead and move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity to address items that are not on the agenda. Each speaker has three minutes maximum. Remember, you can call in. The number is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Do we have anyone on the line? No, and no one in person. So we will go. We will go ahead and close public comm. Oral communications. So we will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. I'll go ahead and make a motion for the approval of minutes and that we receive the 2024 General Plan Annual Report.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor. Okay, so we will move on to public hearing item number one, which is Planning Commission Review and Recommendations to the City Council for Consideration of 2030 General Plan Safety Element Update. Go ahead and start with the staff report.
Good evening. My name is Lori Tamura. I'm a contract planner for the city of Lompoc and had the opportunity to work with Greg and his team helping put the package together for the safety element. We do have our support team here, which is Brent with Mintive's Harnish and Jason with Ringcon that did the environmental review portion of the document. So we can refer to them if there's any technical questions that I'm not able to answer. So moving forward, this is a review of the safety element. This evening, we're going to go through a little bit of a tutorial on the general plan and the different elements. And then we have the presentation of the safety element, Planning Commission discussion, any public comment, and then adoption of a resolution that would be forwarded to the City Council. The general plan is basically the roadmap for future development of the city of Lompoc. It addresses the city's physical developments, location, appropriate mix, timing, and extent of land uses and infrastructure needed to support the development of the city. And periodically, different sections of the general plan called elements are updated based on state law and changes to certain elements. And also involved with responding to community engagement. According to state law, you can only change the general plan four times a year. So it is a little bit strategic on how any changes occur with the general plan. So in the city of Lompoc, we have a number of elements that are part of the 2030 General Plan. That general plan was updated and started in 2010. And most general plans are 20-year cycles. So our general plan is beginning to age towards the end of its 20-year cycle. But the required elements by the state include land use, circulation, housing, which was recently updated last year and was certified by the state in January of '25. We have a conservation element, open space, the safety element, which we're updating now, noise and environmental justice, which again was an element that was adopted last year. The city also has the opportunity to create their own elements, optional elements, and the city of Lompoc has four. We have a park and recreation element, public safety, urban design, and economic development. And that element was written in 2015. Along with the elements, there's a requirement to have environmental review. And because we're referring to the 2030 General Plan, we also had a environmental impact report that was written in 2010. And we've been using that environmental document for many of the changes that have occurred over the last 15, 18 years now as we're heading towards the end of this cycle for different changes to the elements or updates to certain land use considerations. The recent document was an addendum that was basically referred to the previous EIR, but it updated a number of sections. And that was used for the safety and housing and the circulation element. So we're going to now focus on the safety element update. The original safety element was adopted as part of the 2030 plan. It was actually in 2011 that it was adopted. Over that period of time, state law has changed. A number of different things came into play. And updating the element kind of out of cycle is triggered by certain things that occurred. And initially, there was an opportunity to update the element in 2022 as part of climate change, climate action plans that the state was adopting. We didn't update it then. We did have a local hazard mitigation plan, which was adopted in October of '22. And we didn't trigger updating our safety element at that point. But the final trigger was our recent adoption of the housing element. And that was kind of the big trigger. And so that's why we started updating the safety element as part of the housing element being updated last year. So that's why it's timely for us to bring this forward to you now. The safety element discusses and has related policies on a number of items: flooding, fire hazard, climate change, geology and seismicity, aviation hazards, radon gas and hazardous materials. It also includes an emergency evacuation and disaster preparedness plan. The safety element also included two new reports that weren't included in the previously adopted element. And that's the Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment. And that was prepared by Ringcon. And then the evacuation analysis, which was included with DKS, who's a traffic engineering consulting firm that provided the evacuation plan for the city. Keep in mind that there's also a number of other plans that are adopted, including the Local Hazard Management Plan, which is primarily used by the fire department. And there's currently other plans that are being generated now that wildfire issues are such a critical element to California environment. And they all kind of play off of each other. So some of the maps that were included in the safety element include the flood maps. The blue area is in the 100-year floodplain. And you can see how much of the city is impacted by the 100-year floodplain. And then you have the 500-year floodplain. And that impacts a much more larger area of the city of Lompoc. But again, that's has been that situation ever since the city's been established. We also have now a new fire hazard map. This one was just published in March of this year. And so we did embed this map into the safety element. And you can see predominantly the southern edge of the city has a higher rating now. And it's a combination of things. It's not necessarily that there might be a fire hazard in those areas that are already developed, but they're immediately adjacent to Chaparral or Oak Woodlands. And those are the areas that have that impact from the fire. You can also see that the area around Harris Grade and Highway One is identified as a high fire hazard area. And so those areas, when they're developed or are developed, have more sensitivity to what's happening with the terrain as well as the biology, the resources around it. It's important to have a map that shows where critical facilities are. This map will have some minor edits after this meeting because of comments that we did receive. And but it does show where the hospital's located, where schools and other important facilities are located throughout the city so that this can be a map for reference purposes. One of the corrections is that the Lompoc High School ironically was not identified as a critical facility, and it should be. So that will be added to this map. Seismic safety is obviously an important issue for California. And we are. This map has been a resource for the city for a number of years. And what I'm going to do at the end is we do have a couple of minor edits in the document itself that I'll refer you to when we look at the action items that we'll be taking tonight. One of the other collaborations that we work with is Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And recently, they did an analysis of all of the airports within Santa Barbara County. And this is the latest adopted map for the Lompoc Airport. We do have some policies and provisions within the safety element in regards to living near the airport and some of the safety elements of the airport. You will be seeing this particular map again later on this year because there are some rezonings that will be occurring based on this plan. And Greg will be bringing that forward to you in the near future. It was pointed out in the table S2 in the document that we had some redundancy in some of the categories. And so when we take this to the City Council, we're going to amend this table and clean up some of the changes to businesses. Samson Clinic is no longer here. There's a couple of other changes with names of the medical facilities in the area. So we just wanted to identify this as an area table that will have some amendments when we move on to the City Council. So the action tonight is to review and discuss the changes to the safety element as noted in the presentation, open it up to the public for any comments, make a recommendation to the City Council, adopt the resolution subject to the changes by staff or by the planning commission. And we do want to note that in the resolution and the package that you received, the environmental document had the date wrong on the cover page. And the date is actually August of 2024, not October of 2023. That was an error in publishing. And that's part of the resolution. The document itself is the document, but it had the wrong date on it. So I would like to just finish up the presentation by the changes that we're recommending in the seismic safety element portion of the document. And on page S8, there's a paragraph that describes, that notes that in most cases, if you identify a building that has reinforced, unreinforced masonry, that it needs to be retrofitted. The city of Lompoc adopted an ordinance back in the 80s that encouraged the reinforcement of masonry buildings. But if it was too expensive, they did adopt an ordinance said the other option, and it's underlined here in this presentation, the other option is to post a conspicuous sign at the entrance of the building per state law and local ordinance. So we want to add that sentence into the document because that is an adopted ordinance for the city. And it just wasn't included in this document for reference. We also have a policy statement a couple of pages later that basically restates the issue of reinforcement or demolishing of buildings that could be a risk to the public. And we're adding the additional phrase, "or post a conspicuous sign at the entrance of the building per state law and local ordinance." So as part of your action tonight, we would like to also include these changes to the document that would be forwarded on to the City Council. I'm available for any questions. And again, we do have consultants here that can also respond to any of the comments that you have. And we look forward to discussing this element with you.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question. On all the facilities listed here, is there procedures in place when there is an emergency that they know to come and staff those facilities? Now, let's say there's an earthquake at midnight. Does Valley Medical Group know they need to come down and staff that facility? Or are they going to get a call from the hospital and say, we're overwhelmed?
So many of those collaborations and coordination start with the Office of Emergency Services, which is coordinated through the county of Santa Barbara, and then goes down to the local agencies, both police, fire of the city, and also includes county resources and the sheriff's office for notification and dispatch and identifying those areas that are most at risk and then identifying where people would go. So that's part of that local hazard management plan, which has been adopted. There's also just recently, I think within the last week, there's a mutual aid agreement now with the county of Santa Barbara and all of the fire departments in the county to be the first responder wherever that particular fire truck or ambulance is located. It doesn't matter what jurisdiction they're in. They will be assigned that first responding.
Thank you.
I had a question. On the staff report, under G for the emergency evacuation, when it talks about the single exit entry neighborhoods, on one of them, Crown Point. So when you're talking about the single entry, are you talking about? I forgot to write down that street name. But it's the one you would enter, Crown Point. So you can either enter through X Street or you can take FUR all the way down to, I think it's U. I don't know what the next one is, but then Sage. So do those also count? Or is the? I need to look at a map. Do you know that the street?
I think if I'm understanding, there's various streets along the south side, for example, that run as alternative exits, FUR being the one where, and I think FUR is continuous, well, not continuous, but as a secondary route. Is it an immediate secondary route in, out one way or in, out two directions? I think is the spirit of your question.
Yes.
Yep. The neighborhoods that were identified are, were because they had just one way in and out. And there was three neighborhoods, I believe, that were identified. Now, they may have a emergency access exit at one of the other side streets. But the primary access point, they only had one. And so I don't know.
I think there's another question underlying to that point, though, which is perhaps on the south side here, we have some various routes into neighborhoods that do not have any secondary, perhaps one of the three, you know, identified that you might also be asking about in some way. What are you saying happens with them?
Yeah, those roads end in cul-de-sacs or dead ends.
Well, there's a tertiary question here, which is the safety element and the general plan is a guide to the future planning. And if there's new development being allowed or permitted, for example, perhaps on the hillside, to what end are you dictating there's routes above and beyond a state requirement?
Sure, I can actually. Brent Gibbons, Mintier Harnish. I'll go back to the neighborhoods identified. There were three that have a primary, single access and exit entry, which would be Glen Ellen, Crown Point, and then the Hawthorne, Clemens neighborhood. Part of this analysis is identifying those so that there's special attention during evacuation and emergencies that those neighborhoods are given some priority if it's noted that there would be issue evacuating during an emergency, such as a wildfire. Part of the mitigation that the safety element looks at is when new subdivision maps come forward that they have to provide two access points. Single access points will not qualify anymore per SB 99.
Okay, I see then.
And there's two state laws there. So SB 99 is just looking at access points for neighborhoods that have a single way in and way out. Then there's AB 747, which looks at the larger citywide evacuation if that needed to occur. What are the major arterials, collectors, and streets that the city could essentially evacuate in depending on different evacuation scenarios?
So that main entrance there that you have off of Olive, that's that single entry? That's the only entryway you're counting, even though you can get into that development from different streets?
Correct. That was highlighted as the primary entry.
Okay. Because when I was looking at those other neighborhoods, like I think it was, is it Glen Ellen? That other one? It seemed, yes, there was only one entryway. And then all the other streets went into a cul-de-sac or a dead end.
And that's part of the issue. If you needed to evacuate that neighborhood and other access or exit points were dead ends essentially, well, then there only is really one primary entry and exit point.
I see.
So in some capacity, are we building in exit and safety plans through our old emergency routes for the areas, say, that are in immediate flood zone risks that only have the single exit?
Usually what ends up, first of all, the fire department knows that those are neighborhoods that are, I'm going to say bottlenecked. They have one entrance and/or one enters it out. And so it's important to keep those entrances open for people to evacuate and provide that secondary, that access to the site. There is. I don't know if that answers your question.
Fairly enough, we've got a warped piece of wood. I mean, in one side, you'd have a flood. On the other side, you'd have a fire, neither of which are going to occur at the same time. And almost none of which are going to hit the center of town.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But I think, but again, there's something that we dodged here that is the underlying spirit of the question, which is, is development going to be hindered as a result of these types of situations, i.e. one entrance, and there being some sort of hillside development? And maybe that's a question of if it doesn't matter other than you're identifying the places to serve immediate response that's independent of development. But if there's hillside development, which is in some ways being permitted and allowed, then perhaps the question is what is going to determine the, under the term, development? Yeah, but what is be considered a subdevelopment? One house, three houses, apartment, a little zone, a new, any new development?
New development, I would assume, would be subsequent.
But see, that might not be, that may be painting into a corner. I'm just putting words into, so don't hold me to this because I'm not going there. But if it's all new development and they start counting ADUs as new development, well, then everything on the south side would not be allowed to have new development because there's only one exit. Is that what I'm trying to understand? As Brianna was asking?
ADUs wouldn't be new development, though. They'd be redevelopment of an existing parcel, right? In addition of an ADU, that's what you're talking about?
So you're blending a number of different requirements and state laws. What Brent was just mentioning is that for new developments, a subdivision comes in for 10 lots, 15 lots?
Is that the 10 lots? Is that the number?
Well, it depends on how long the, there's a lot of factors. First of all, along the south side of Lompoc, not only are we dealing with fire hazard as identified on the fire map, we're also dealing with slopes. And there's other policies within the city's ordinances and general plan that talk about development on hillsides. So there's certain slopes that are allowed. There's certain protection of oak trees. There's a number of different things that guide what happens on slopes over and above just fire protection. But if a project comes forward that's five lots or more, that's a track map. And that is the one that really the fire department's going to focus on. And they're normally going to look for a secondary access or an emergency access or some other way of routing traffic because they don't want to have the same experiences that have happened down in Malibu or whatever. So those are the kind of things that development projects would be looking at. And as far as the accessory dwelling unit question that came up, in most cases, we are required to approve accessory dwelling units unless there's a health and safety impact to that particular development. And that's where we would coordinate with the fire department, make sure that there's adequate water, make sure that there's adequate access. And we want to make sure that we're not creating an additional hazard to approving the accessory dwelling unit. So we're hopefully answering your question. It's almost a case-by-case basis when you're talking about hillside development.
Well, I've probably put more than enough words in Brianna's mouth on the question, so I don't know if we've hit the topic or not.
Okay, just so my, for my clarification, is Olive Street what the single entry exitway is into the town? Or are we talking about?
Let's just for a second say, yes. Now what? What's the fear that we're going to stop any development on the other side?
South side of it.
Is that my hearing? Is there any new development on the other south side? On the other side of Olive?
Yes.
And that's what I thought I was in some ways hearing, which is what? And that's what I thought I was in some ways hearing, which is what I was trying to understand the definition around what they're going to say is, oh, this would trigger.
New, new subdivisions would get triggered under state law SB 99 that they'd have to provide two access points. It's not, it's not if somebody built a single family home on the edge of town that they would have to have two access points. It requires a subdivision map to come forward.
Nobody's arguing that point. We're arguing whether or not we're cutting out a fair exit from the safety plan. That's going to also trigger what you keep hindering or pointing to. So we're not talking about those things together. We're talking about them independently. Yes, that's a real thing. We understand that. But if you're telling me my subdivision doesn't have two exits and I'm pointing at two exits, we have a commissioner here saying, that's not really a fair line. Who decided that line? And that's the question I believe is trying to be asked. And under what conditions or what data says this is the line it has to be? No two exits, under what condition?
I hear you.
Okay. Can we talk about why Olive was considered? Is it because it's a throughway? As we use the example FER, which has multiple exit points to reroute people even away from Olive at some point?
So the rationale behind counting, counting Olive as the primary and not the secondary, I would need to check back with the traffic consultant on that.
That was DKS, is that what?
Correct. And we can do so. Like we can, yeah.
Those are the questions.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff?
I have one that's just a little bit more general. When we were talking about, when you were giving the presentation on slides four and five, you stated that there were four amendments permitted per year. And we have four in play currently. And then I see circulation is in process, safety is obviously in process. We got the certification in January, so I'm guessing housing was number one. But you stated we were doing a fourth. Is that economic development considering it's 2015? Or which is the fourth that's currently being pursued?
So if, the housing element was adopted by the city council in 2024. It was certified by the state in January of '25. So that would not count as one of our four amendments.
For '25, because it's based upon the council. Okay, cool.
Correct. So right now, we're looking at the safety element, which is here tonight. The circulation element amendments will be coming to you next month. We do have some work that we're doing with the airport land use plan that we noted earlier will come later this year. And then we have one other option for updates.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yes, I believe we're good. Correct. And then we'll bring it back to us. So there are no other questions for staff? I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. And then remember, you can call in.
Nicholas Gonzalez, Redding, Lompoc. One thing I'd like to make certain, and you all kind of brushed upon it, is that anything that we do in the safety element is not going to be an automatic trigger to somehow prevent the Builders' Remedy project that is coming into place just in down that street on Olive Avenue. If, if that single entry point is then going to trigger some type of reason to deny the, the potential of that project to come in in that location, I think that's something that you would need to revisit. The other item I'm concerned from a public, from a more of a safety factor, it states that you should have a, some regular plans. Let me just bear with me here. My concern principally is there's a, a facility north of Walmart that uses chlorine gas. And as part of the plan, there's supposed to be an evacuation plan and it's supposed to be practiced or utilized. That's a really significant issue, just because chlorine gas is very volatile. So where would we find that item in the safety plan? And how would we implement to make sure that there's some kind of practice and notification to the residents around that facility? The other item would be the fuel, especially in light of the fact that we're, we're having increased transport through the city on Ocean Avenue of the fuel for all the missiles, is what's the plan in place for that? I certainly don't want to see, the last thing we want to see is anything happening and we're unprepared. The reaction that we have is only as good as the plan and how many times we practice it. So I, I know this is a more general approach at this level, but I think there are some things of significant importance that should be addressed more specifically. And I apologize for not sending comments in earlier, but I didn't realize that this would, this would encompass this. Thank you.
Well, can you clarify which project you were talking about? You said you were concerned of restrictions on?
Can you restate the project you were speaking about?
Sorry, I missed that part.
There's a Builders' Remedies project pending in what is considered Bodger Seed Area, which is on Olive. And so what I would hate to see is we desperately need housing. And what I would hate to see is that you make, you pass this house, this safety element and because of some single entrance limitation on one development, you prevent the other development from being able to, to move forward. Because there was the question you asked, Commissioner Bridge, about Olive Street. Well, you know, again, if there's various exits, primary and secondary, so I just would hate to see a conflict by something you approved tonight that would be an impediment to that development tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Yes, Commissioner Bridge.
So going through here, there was a handful when we dug in. One of the things I read was that there is 20 additional measures that have been added.
I'm sorry, could you ask that question again?
Yes. It says, many of the measures are similar. However, there's been 20 additional. So two-part question. One is, are many of the measures already in the 2030 plan? And we're not really having to integrate them in? Or these are drastically different in some ways? And so the assimilation is going to occur? And along with the comment on page five of six, 20 additional measures have been added.
So most of the measures were the same as the previous safety element. But in this element, they were restructured to be more directly associated with the topic areas and also included the climate change and some of the other topics that weren't in the original safety element. So they were restructured.
And the 20 additional measures?
Again, those were included for climate change and the emergency, the disaster preparedness measures were added into that document.
When were they added in? And which were they?
Through this process that we're going through?
Not the process, the date. Was it, did the last planning commission review all of those 20? Is this new as of January? And were the first to see them? Was there a, was there a version, say, March? And it's changed since then?
No. This is from the previous element to this document. And we sent out a, we did have a public review draft that was circulated for a month through March and April. And this is the first review at this planning commission for the measures and the policies for this document.
So just to correct and make sure I understood, you said, no, there wasn't a different version in, say, early March. However, you had a mid-March public review and you're now presenting another document to us? That seems contradictory. Is that a fair understanding of what you just said?
Um, no, I will, let me restate it.
Okay.
The consultant team in the city circulated a public review draft and we did receive comments from that public review draft. And we amended the document to reflect the comments that we did receive. And that is the document we're bringing forward.
I just heard you say, I thought there was no participation or comments.
No, I did not, I'm sorry.
So let's just start over so I can make sure. In this document I have here, on May 14th, it says, many of these measures are similar to those in the previous safety element. However, about 20 additional measures have been added. When were they added into this document?
The comment period closed on, I think it was April 10th. And so we went through the comments and we provided them to the consultant and then they were made and.
So there was a previous version to April?
Correct.
So these are the first times we get to make the comments?
Correct.
Okay. And?
Well, and again, they, there was that public comment period that was open that was available for people to review at that time.
And then the 20 additional measures were added previous to March or after March?
Those were previously in March. In that public hearing review document, those measures, those changes in those measures were in that document.
Okay. So there was a different version in early March available to the public?
Correct.
Now, between January 1st and March, were those additional measures added? Or was it prior to January? The state law, i.e. the climate change portions that you primarily driven those, when would those additionally added to this document?
So as you can see by particularly the additional reports that are part attached to this, the housing element as well as the safety element started in 2022. So the iteration of both, well, of the safety element has been in process for about two and a half years. And those changes were.
All fair. Could you identify the 20 additional however about? Give or take maybe that many? Because this is a very binding document and we're guesstimating here in the process. Do you have a list in here of those exact 20 or however many about?
Um, I did not provide the redlined version of the document.
Okay.
And so we can provide the redlined version of the document for your review, if you'd like. We thought it would be cleaner to bring the full document as its final form to you.
I had a question. On those comments that you did receive that you said you made amendments, can we also see those comments that were made?
Yes.
And Chair, if I may just step in real quick, this might provide some more clarification to Commissioner Bridge. As part of any safety element, the state requires that CAL FIRE and the Board of Forestry also do a review of this element during the public comment period that Ms. Tamura had mentioned. And we did receive back and forth comments from CAL FIRE. So a lot of the safe, the wildfire policies and wildfire programs do have modifications that are required to get approval by the state.
Okay. So is that where a majority of those comments came from then?
CAL FIRE did have a set of comments through that process that they submitted. Yes.
Fair enough. But we don't have a lot of adjacent fire wildfires occurring. So when we talk about the climate change, portions, we have to be fair that the policies we, and measures we put in may not actually match any specific requirement from the state. It's interpreted. It's based on data, we believe. Just as you've said on Olive Street, yes, there are things we can do. We see there are tertiary and secondary and actually a fourth exit route. Perhaps this makes and alleviates Olive's emergency plan less of a restrictive situation on north versus south end. So I don't want to go and try and go all the way up the state, but we're probably going to on this document. Because this is our opportunity to restrict or remove those conditions that allow those conversations to be had or not had.
So, um, the next one I had was, we have a handful of climate change, 3.3, on page S23. So this is digging into the, actually, the policies that you guys want to implement, as I'm understanding. And I'm going to have to assume that either A, we didn't do it, or B, we're going to do it better, or C, it's new, such as a roof systems. Is a green roof system, anything from perhaps adaptive paint coating to some sort of solar requirement? What is going to, you know, track this? Or somebody going, hey, I want to grow veggies on my roof because that qualifies? And I'm looking at that more as a, both sides of that, a requirement or lack of having to do those things?
The way the policies are written, it's to be inclusive of new technology and new opportunities. And so having green roof, green other materials that are.
So the challenge I have with that is in reviewing a wine installation, the developer was trying to use a refrigeration coating that was ahead of the state standards and ahead of the requirements. And so the city made them go through a lot of proof. Where's the criteria that it says, well, that's green enough or not green enough or prove to it? Even when doing nothing was the requirement of sorts? It's greener then? Like, how do we, how do we, where's the criteria of what's green today, green tomorrow? Where are we, where are we getting that criteria from?
The first thing is to start with the current state law and building codes and the CAL Green requirements. They're becoming much more, I would say, inclusive of technology.
Would you go so far as to say they're also more efficient and fast in their updates?
I, I wouldn't say fast in their updates, but they are, because it still has to go through a process. But the newest.
Cities faster?
The newest codes that are coming from the state includes a lot of climate change adaptations, such as the ones that you're identifying in that policy. And so when somebody comes forward with a new idea, we do need to make sure it follows the code. We do check with the building department. We do tech with state building codes. And if there's a validation for a system or a materials or a process, that can be certified by that particular engineering company or builder.
Would you take, would you take another state or another country's data?
I'm, I'm speaking for the building department.
I understand. That's my point. We're getting on two very random subjects here, three parts. One, this is essentially a state mandate. And so why not, in so many of these places that I want to go across, say, we're going to reference the state standards and follow those. And we're not going to over dip our toes into building. Because you, in some ways, this is borderline that. Oh, you didn't do green enough. Well, who's saying that? The planning department? What is green enough? So there's a lot of these, like a lot of these that go to this theme. And I want to ask one question before I go and dig in, because I got pages. Are you going to tell me I have to vote on this tonight? Or can I pull it?
We're here to take input from the. We're here to take input from this planning commission, and you do not have to approve it tonight.
I'd say we just pull it, table it for 30 days, and let us go through this. Because it is, like, your 4.2, I'll tell you right now, pull it. Pull it completely. It's above and beyond standards. It's, you're telling somebody to demolish their building. Pull it. Where's the other ones? We've got targeted communication towards at-risk communities with vulnerable populations. We're going to treat all of our community the same. That's unfair. Short of, there's actually a slope risk, or there's a real flood risk. Like, you're all vulnerable in an emergency. I'm making comments, please. All I'm saying is, there's a lot of stuff, this is our chance, and I don't feel like wasting everybody's time, when we could do this aside. And that's where I was so hot and heavy, I'm going, how long have you guys had this?
Again, this process started about two and a half years ago, and it was triggered by the update to the housing element.
But we've been asked to review this in three days. And not one thing that you highlighted in your presentation dug into every single policy change and every single measure change, of which I simply asked, what are the 20? I know that's different than what's been seen. I know that's different than what was in the past. So it's not like in the last two years, I could have even absorbed that. So that's not fair. Nor is I think it fair to you to sit here all night and go, well, what about this? Well, that's how that's, nope, we didn't need, oh, that matches for 10 years. We don't have any of that.
Just in response to that, we're perfectly willing to listen to any comments that we get from the planning commission, city council, the public, and bring the document back to you in, in response to those comments. If possible, if we could get the comments from you within a week, so that the consultants can, and I can, Greg can put the package back together and bring it forward to you at the next meeting or following. This is an iterative process, and we're glad to work with you and make sure that this document is something that you can support.
Okay. So what if we did this? What if we brought it back, but with the redlining that they made from the changes, as well as we see all the comments that were made? And also, because we're seeing what was mandated by state, if you could do, like, a different color to show which policies were made from the different mandates?
And also, there might be a little bit of a technological to print issue, so maybe a little proof read, just like page S6 refers to figure S5 in bold and in print. Error reference source not found. I know that's just pedantic, but maybe just a little more proof read, because we don't want to permit something, you know, authorize something that's got references that are not sourced.
There also, and I didn't, wasn't able to fully catch them, but as a whole, trying to understand, it appeared that there may have been PG&E references?
Yes, there was. And that was one of the corrections comments that we got, is to remove the PG&E references. But we did include the fact that PG&E does serve the surrounding areas of the county. So there is some coordination that happens as you get to the fringe of the city with PG&E in case there is an emergency.
Okay, so when I read something like, "The city shall partner with Kachuma Resource Conserva- Conservation District to conduct a study on open space areas in regards to cooling magnitude and areas of maximum preservation," is that a PG&E remnant from a consultant? Or is that true to us?
The policy that references Kachuma Resource, that is the whole San Ynez Valley, Lompoc Valley Water Management Agency. So it does include the city of Lompoc, but it also includes Salván, Guelton, the San Ynez Valley, the Lompoc Valley, all the way out to the base.
I'll throw a quick follow-up for clarification. The gentleman who was kind enough to give public comment brought up the plan and implementations in case there was a chlorine exposure on North Walmart and the Ocean Avenue Fuel Transport Plan. Is, based upon the earlier comments, that is done by the county? Is that correct? Or is that something that's coming down to the municipal level?
Any business that has hazardous materials needs to provide a safety plan to the fire department, both at locally as well as the county, having that documented in those agencies so that when they're responding to an incident, they have the plan available and they can respond accordingly.
Quick, quick follow-up to that.
Can I, can I pause you? Wait. Do you guys, okay. You can continue, sorry. Just couldn't hear.
Quick follow-up to that. Just sort of hammer this home a little bit. So that's disclosed to the local fire department, the county. Does the public have access to this information or plan it anyway?
That's going to be my next question.
I can't say definitively right now what information is available in those plans. Some of that is proprietary, but it is available. I can just verify that before I answer in full.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other clarification or questions?
I do have a question. It's basically regarding policy 4.1 on page S24. "The city shall avoid where possible placement of critical facilities in areas prone to slope instability or liquefaction during an earthquake." I'm looking at the critical facilities map on page 13. I mean, just from looking at also the, where was that, the actual liquefaction, exhibit B, figure S6, the liquefaction hazard pretty much encompasses all of Lompoc. Do we have any backup for the critical infrastructure in areas that are not primarily, and maybe I need an engineer to explain this to me better, but it looks like to me like everything listed on the critical facilities map is under a maximum probability of severity and, you know, high class levels, class three and class two of severity of risk relating to liquefaction. Do we have any backup facilities that are outside of those areas?
When you say backup facilities, are you talking about for emergency preparedness as far as the fire department and hospitals and everything else?
Well, referencing back to page S24, policy 4.1, "The city shall avoid where possible placement of critical facilities in those high-risk areas." So that's, that's kind of my concern is, where's, I just don't want something to fall through the cracks, quote unquote, no pun intended. But basically, is that going to be looked at? Is, just because it looks like we're already contradicting ourselves by putting our critical infrastructure in areas that we say we shouldn't be doing?
So there's a two-pronged answer for that. First of all, the city is built on these features. And so these policies are for future development with soils reports and surveys and geotechnical reports, particularly near the fault lines that have been mapped along the south end of the city. And, you know, liquefaction is mainly dealing with the compaction of that development, for the existing development. There is, there is potential for retrofitting, but it's not going, we're not going to go out and look at every building that's existing in the city. Basically, the city's built up. And you think about the last 50 years, that some of these requirements have been placed, anything that's probably 50 years and younger have had soils reports, building permits, foundations, and are, have addressed the earthquake requirements as well as liquefaction requirements. Prior to that, there may be some risks.
Thank you.
And then, just another thing. So when reading through the staff report, it said, for example, in B, where it talked about the fire hazards, that CAL FIRE published the new wildfire maps for the state. Is that what's already in here? Because here it says it will be added.
We were able to add the new March 2025 map to this document. So we can change that reference.
Okay. And then another thing on H, it says, "The city is working with county fire safe councils to prepare a new plan called the Community Wild, or Wildfire Protection Plan." Is that one also in here already, or is that going to be something that has to be amended and put in?
That, that plan is in the works. We've met several times with the consultants that are coming from the Fire Safe Council, and they're the ones preparing that document. And it is an adjunct to all the other plans that have been generated. And we expect that that will probably be another six months to a year before that plan is done.
Okay. And then just amongst the commission, I was thinking we can either move this, because we need time, or they need time for, to give us the red lines and the comments, and then we have to make our comments back to them. So how about July? Or do-
Just table this 30 days.
30 days? Does that give you enough time to give us?
Yes, if, and again, I'm working with Greg here, if we could get your comments to us within a week, we can respond to those and also provide the redlined versions. And we'll use a different color for responding to your comments, so that we have a document that we can walk through with you at the next meeting.
Okay. But for me, I know I would like to see those, those red lines and those public comments before I make my comment. So that's why I was wondering, that's why. Do you have enough time to do that?
So for clarification, you want to see that information prior to the next meeting, even before the staff report comes out? Or do you want that in the next staff report?
Well, that's why, would you guys like-
I would say sooner the better, just because the whole intention is differentiate what those additions were, the 20 additions, and identify that and have any comment on those. So the sooner we could get the red line-
Okay. So for, for example, if we get it to you next week, then you have more time and-
Okay.
So as long as we can get them as soon as possible, that way we can give you the comments that you would like, then that should work out. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to move this agenda item to the next planning commission meeting, and request that we get this safety element with the red lines, as well as the state mandates in the different color font, as well as the public comments, and where those amendments were made within this element.
Chair, so we don't need to renotice the public hearing, we do need to say the exact date of the next meeting. Does somebody have that?
Okay. So if it can be brought back to the June 11, 2025 meeting? Is there a second? Oh, sorry. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
So I would like to add one comment in regards to planning commission management. We were planning on bringing the circulation element at the next meeting. So, and that public comment period ends on Friday. And so what we can do in working with Greg is provide to you also the circulation element. Again, I don't want to overwhelm you, but these are happening at the same time. And so if we provide that to you also earlier, we will not schedule it for the next meeting. We'll focus on the safety element, but we'll get the circulation element into your hands sooner than later. And we will work with the consultants to give you the redline version of that document and any comments that we receive by Friday. And so it would probably come to you after we get the circulation element done, but it'll give you an opportunity to review that document, so we don't go through this again.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to oral communications.
Nick Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Thank you for, for taking some extra time to consider that as a pass, planning commissioner. I can tell you that we often made changes that later we were litigated against and were the causes and prevention of certain developments and expansions. So it is very important that you review those in great detail and seek out those things that might be obstacles and pitfalls in the future. The second thing is, is if there's any possible way that you can combine these general plan amendments into one amendment, I'm not an expert. We have a legal team here, but I was always under the understanding that if you did multiple amendments at one point in time, it was a one-time amendment to the general plan. What, the other item that I get fearful of is that you make one or two or three amendments, you have one left, and then you need two. And then you can't do something until the next calendar year. So if you can combine as many of these as possible into one-time amendment to the general plan as a holistic whole, rather than piecemeal, maybe they can correct me, but my impression is then that counts for one, one amendment to the general plan at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay, we'll go ahead and close oral communications. Next, written communications, are there any? None. So director staff communications.
Yes, I just wanted to mention upcoming meetings, and Lori already briefed on it, that the circulation element will be coming to you. Now, again, it's up to you if you want us to bring it to the June meeting or the July meeting, depending on the person that spoke. So that's pretty much all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it all in June then. And if we can get that circulation element sooner, that would be great. Okay, thank you for that. Any commission requests? Okay, no commission requests. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting to a regular meeting at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, June 11, 2025.